Good morning and welcome to Fort Mill's Town Council Regular Meeting for April 26. Thank you all for joining us on a beautiful day and it looks like it's going to be a beautiful week here in Fort Mill. We will have, we'll have a pledge to allegiance and then an invocation by Mr. Hels. Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
Let's pray. Father, as we bow before you this morning, we come to you with humble grace, unto you, and we thank you for everything you've done for us. We thank you for all the blessings you've bestowed upon us. We pray that you be with us today, give us wisdom, give us grace, give us the power to do what we need to do for the town of Fort Mill. We give you the praise and glory for it all in Jesus' holy name we pray. Amen.
Amen. Thank you. All right. I think we have Councilmember Hels, Huntley, and myself here in person, and I know we have Ms. Hemsaw and Mr. Moody online. Ms. Cook will be a bit late. Jamie, are you with us?
Yes, ma'am.
Hey, how are you this morning?
Going well, thank you.
All righty then. Councilmembers, you have been provided the minutes of the April 12 Town Council meeting. Are there any additions, deletions, or corrections?
I have a motion and a second to approve.
All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. All those opposed, please say nay. All right, thank you. Public comment. Pursuant to Section 2-46 of the Code of Ordinances, for the town of Fort Mill, any citizen of the town may appear before council for the purpose of providing public comments on any municipal matter, except personnel matters. Those who wish to speak must sign in outside of council chambers prior to the start of the meeting. To maintain social distancing, citizens will only be allowed into council chambers one at a time to give their comments. Davey, do we have anyone present this morning?
No, ma'am. No one signed up this morning.
All righty then. We'll end the public comment period. There are no presentations, so we'll move directly to Old Business Item Number One, Second Reading of an Ordinance to Amend the Budget for the Town of Fort Mill, South Carolina, for the fiscal year beginning October the 1st, 2020, and ending September the 30th, 2021. And Davey's here if we have any questions. Do I have a motion?
I make a motion to accept Old Business Item Number One.
I have a motion and a second. Davey, have there been any changes or amendments to our amended budget ordinance?
No, ma'am. There's been no changes.
Anyone have any questions for Davey? Hearing none. The motion on the table is to approve. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. All those opposed, nay. All right, thank you. Old Business Item Number Two, Reconsideration of Resurfacing Tennis Courts at the Fort Mill YMCA at the Complex. And this also is Davey, as our expert. Do I have a motion?
I make a motion to accept Old Business Item Number One.
All right. I've got a motion and a second. Thank you, Council, for your patience as we work through the many options to make the needed changes at the town's tennis courts out at the complex on 160. In your package, we had two options for you to consider. Option one was resurfacing the existing six-and-a-half courts and adding a restroom building to that facility. You have a breakdown of those costs in your package. We also have option two, which is resurface four tennis courts, add two new courts over the half-court, and restroom facility. You have all the details on the cost breakdown for that option. There's an additional option of new lighting and poles at $45,000. The projected timeline would be to, for the second one, would include new advertisements for bids, a public bid opening, and vetting of the bids, and it would likely cause us to move into the actual resurfacing and construction beginning in March of '22. Whoops, sorry about that. I'm my own worst enemy. Restroom construction would begin in 2021 and be completed by the first quarter of 2022. If Council determines that they will go with option one, which is to resurface the courts where they sit, that we would immediately resurface those which have gone out for bids previously. Davey, did I summarize that properly?
You did, ma'am. Yeah, that's the difference between the option one and option two is mainly the timeline and then the additional cost with option two.
Okay. Councilmembers, discussion is open at this time. I did hear from Ms. Cook. She is the chair for the Parks and Rec Committee. She knew she would not be able to be here immediately this morning, and she said she favored option two. And again, the difference is change in cost from approximately $800,000, $880,000 to Neither of these options provide for eight full courts. However, we determined that with our commitment to produce or build a new gym at the complex that it might be the right time to add the additional courts so that we can lump that into one, one particular budget item. We may need to do a bond referendum. It just depends on how we look at funding for that. So we can add the two courts accordingly, so that we can have a full eight. Just for anyone from the public who's listening to this, the reason that we're working on these courts are they're in pretty sad disrepair, and we'd like to get them up to a condition that we would feel good about as a part of the town's offerings in our Parks and Recreation Department.
Can we get Chris to move the, to option two, please?
Chris, can you move the, thank you. The difference in looking at, and Jamie, I know that you had been in favor of the eight courts that would be needed to run a full program with, with tournament play. We ran into the issue of currently, we were prepared to resurface the existing six, and then we ran into some fairly extensive cost increases due to having to look at stormwater costs if we move forward with the eight immediately. So just for anyone that's wondering why all the back and forth, we're just trying to get the very best product that we can for the least cost at this point in time. So I have a motion to approve this particular item, but this item has two options. So I believe we're all going to have to state our preference for one of the options and then make a motion to approve that option. Is that correct, Davey?
That's correct.
All right.
We do have a question.
Who's got a question?
Chris Moody.
Hey, darling, you can ask any question you want.
Yeah, for option two, I remember in our last meeting, Davey, there was a, this is a little, and correct me if I'm wrong, a little cheaper than the old option two or old option three. I don't have that in front of me. Do, that's due to having to do the additional stormwater changes or?
Yes, sir. That's a portion of the, the cost difference. The old option two was the resurfacing of four existing courts and link four courts, which would put us over that one acre.
Requirement.
Yeah, requirement for the stormwater enhancement. So either both of these options here, we're staying within that boundary, and so it would not have to add to that stormwater pond at this time. So I think that's the difference in the cost. What you're looking at now, option one is the, from last meeting, is the old option one. Option two is, was the old option three from last meeting. Just remove the old option two from last meeting.
I think it's, I think it's important, Mr. Moody, Mr. Shirey, Trudy, and all, that Lisa, Davey, and I met with E S P. last week just to talk about the location of the proposed new gym and see what maximization we could get from looking at all areas that that gym might fit, so that whatever changes we make to the tennis courts, we would not in a couple of years be digging up. It appeared from that discussion that the location of the new gym behind the existing gym appeared to be the best choice, based on their opinion, for accessibility. We also looked at, and you've previously seen, a diagram that they had come up with to show some changing of the turnaround at the end of the two parking lots and some future enhancements for the area there. So I think at this time, getting the six courts in better and safe condition is, is better than waiting for us to do a larger, more impactful construction project. That doesn't mean we won't do the two additional courts. It just means at this point in time, we would really like to move forward.
Yeah, how's option one?
They, option one and two are for six courts. Davey, would you explain the basic difference between option one and option two?
Sure. Option one, we put this, we six-and-a-half courts, resurfacing the ones that are in their current locations that you see on the monitor here. That's put a public bid within the last year. We vetted that bid. We have a company that's ready for, to put us in their queue so that they can schedule to resurface the, the courts. So option one, if we move in that direction, the courts should be completed in this by the end of summer, if, if their scheduling works out. We would then, we would still have to move to a, a bid process through our procurement department for the restroom and any of the amenities or facilities to go along with that. And then we would, you can construct the restroom throughout the winter. It's just the tennis courts have to be in warm weather.
Because of the surface material.
So option one would get us the tennis courts possibly this summer, restroom first quarter of 2022. Option two, because we're, we're changing the, the bid from option one, we have to drop back, do away with that bid process and open up a new bid process for the resurfacing of the four lower courts and then constructing two new courts. And they're in the location of the half-court now. So the half-court would go away, two new courts would be constructed there, and then a restroom facility as well. The timing of the, putting it out for bid, having a public bid opening, and vetting that bid is going to be nearly two months. So that's going to, it's going to hinder the opportunity possibly for the courts to be constructed in this, this 2021 time period. So we anticipate those being put on a March timeframe to be, to start construction, but we would start the restrooms in 2021. They would be, the restrooms would actually be constructed prior to the tennis courts in option two. In option one, tennis courts would come before them.
A quicker analysis would be option one says we're going to resurface all those courts where they sit and build a restroom. Okay? Does everybody get that? And it's a little bit less cost, and it's a quicker start because we would have to go back out to bid. Option two, take those top two courts, closest to the complex, and recreate them down in alignment with the other four, so they'd be in a straight line. And those top two courts would leave that opening that we're probably going to need for situating a new gym there eventually. Option two, and again, Ms. Cook favors option two, allows us to go ahead and, and do that, but it's a higher cost and a later start date. Correct?
That's correct.
But option two puts us in a better situation as to if we decide to do that additional court to the left, or if we're adding to the building in the back, or putting in a field, or, or whatever. The other, the option one just is status quo, basically.
Yes. Well, status quo, plus new surface, plus new restroom.
Right, right. Okay. I, I, I don't know how to say the, I make a motion to accept option two.
Okay. Do I have a second? I have a motion and a second. Anyone have any further questions? Davey, at this point, do we need to determine the lighting, new lighting?
It's in the bid.
It's in the bid, it says options.
Yes, ma'am. I think it would be beneficial for staff to know what you would end the bid, once we advertise this. So, you know, for both of these options, we can use holes and the lighting heads if we would like. They're just, they need to be renovated, but, or painted, but, to the extent of $160,000, that was the price to use the existing poles with a brand-new LED-style lighting head. So, ma'am, if you would like to, if the, if the, Moody would like to specify that you retrofit lighting, that's what we would have added to the bid.
Jamie, did you hear that?
So we can keep the existing poles but upgrade them to LED or do all new poles?
Correct.
Okay.
There may need some refurbishment on the existing poles if we go with that. Davey, I'm assuming we've had an engineer look at them and determine their lifespan?
We've, they looked at them, but they could not determine their lifespan until, until they actually got in and started working with the lighting, taking the heads off. So they let that possibility open, that they feel like they would be reused based on the new-style head. But you do run that risk once they remove the old head and review, take a close look at the poles, that they may have, some may have to be changed.
Would it be then optimal to take Jamie's motion, and, and Jamie, this is your motion, I can't add words to it, you would have to, just leave, leave that open as we move forward with the project to do what is needed to make them safe and operable? Because option two says retrofit lighting and refurbish existing poles.
Yeah, that's what I was just looking at, that for $175,000, retrofit lighting, and then at the bottom, it has a little asterisk with new lighting at 45. How come it's cheaper for the new lighting?
An additional 45.
Yes, an additional 45.
Oh, additional, okay. I didn't, I did not see that, sorry.
It's okay. So it's an additional 45 if we just go ahead and make the decision to do new lighting and new poles?
I, I agree.
With the new lighting and new poles, would you like to restate your motion?
I may, I make a motion that we accept New Business, I'm sorry, Old Business Item Number Two, with option two with the contingency of doing the new lighting also.
Okay. And Mr. Moody, you had seconded.
Oh, I seconded, well.
You seconded this option?
Yes.
Anyone else have any questions or comments? The option on the, the motion on the table is to approve option two with the new lighting and poles included, and to move forward with this as our tennis court renovation. Any questions?
And just we'll leave room for a new gym.
Yes. Yes. All right. I've got a call for the vote. All those in favor of the motion on the table for option two with the additional lighting and poles, please say aye. Aye. All those opposed, please say nay. It's a unanimous decision. All right. Let me back, back to this.
Do you vote on the motion or the discovery?
We need to vote on the original motion.
Uh, we, I think we don't have a, you too.
All right. Okay. There are no new business items. We will move now into an information discussion item number one, update of I-77 Catawba Ridge, Catawba River Bridge Construction Project. Chris Sardelli.
Good morning, Cam.
Good morning.
I am. Thank you so much for having me. Just wanted to take a few minutes to walk everyone through the upcoming S C D O T Catawba Bridge Construction. As many of you have seen, this project has already partially begun. You've most likely seen the partial lane closures that have been happening throughout April. This project will begin full-time at 9:00 PM on May 6, and it will continue until 5:00 AM on May 24. So just over 17 days, it'll be 24 hours a day, every day of the week. So it's going to be a continuous project. The reason we wanted to bring this to you is this will definitely bring a lot of traffic to the area. As you can see from the graphics, the way this project will work is they're going to close the southbound bridge, the two lanes, or all the lanes on that side, and the southbound traffic is going to be diverted into the northbound lanes to accommodate two-way traffic over the bridge, two lanes in each direction. And the work they've been doing in April is basically cutting a hole through that median to allow for that traffic to go through. This is definitely going to be a bit of a headache for motorists, and so I'll walk you through a little bit about what ramps are going to be closed. There will be a temporary concrete media that'll be in place to separate that traffic, and the southbound ramp, on-ramp on Sutton Road, which is exit 83, will be closed during the entire project, as will all of the northbound on-ramps at Cherry and Saline's Road, which is exit 82. Just as a note, I was working with agencies during this project, all of the emergency responders, the school districts, municipalities, and all the affected areas, and we've been looking at different ways we can get this message out. Part of what we're going to be doing is letting people know, in addition to some of these ramps being closed or being overwhelmed, there will also be some river access points that we've determined should be closed. As part of this project, they were planning to put construction workers underneath the, the bridge, and if anyone ever drew that was fishing or on a tube, stop construction, they're going to put an air horn to warn those people. We have a working, the public information officers from some of their agencies, and we determined that, that may not be their safest option, just because once the weather gets warm, we'll be a busy area. So we have determined that several river access points will be closed. We've been working with Duke Energy. The only one in our area that will be closed, that we're in charge of, is the Mason's Bend River Access Point. So York County was actually very nice, created us our own sign to put in that area, which we've, we've received, to let people know that this is, it will be closed during that. In addition, there will be digital signs that motorists have probably already seen on the main roads, there'll be detour and some of the secondary roads, warning motorists that this is going to be an issue. I'll show you on the next slide. There will be heavy delays. This is a, a map that our P I O group has created. This was done through Rock Hill. You can see, these are some of the areas that take a lot of traffic. So we want to warn people that in addition to I-77 being very, very busy, there will be backups on US 21 Sutton Road, posted detour, the Highway 49 Buster Ford Bridge area, US 21, SC 160 in Sutton Road in Fort Mill, and then in Rock Hill, several parts, Saline's, Cherry, Selvera, and Dave Lyle Boulevard. We just want to let everyone know that we are working on potential detours to offer to the public. We are finalizing that information now, meeting with the P I O group this week, to see if we can determine detours that accommodate the whole area. We don't want one municipality to have detours that may impact enough, so we will be working on the best routes. But we want everyone to note that the way most people get their information when they drive is through GPS or apps like Waze, and just as a heads up for everyone that, when they follow those, they're following detours onto all the surrounding secondary and smaller roads. So we just want everyone to be aware, all the roads in the surrounding area will be busy during this project. So I'll show you on the last slide, the best places to get information during the project. York County Sheriff's Office is taking the lead, and they are posting all the up-to-date information, so we've been referring them to the website, yorkcountysheriff.com/77bridge. And our website too, I have all the information up on, including a map, and links to the various municipalities that are offering information. So if people have questions, we've had that information up, and we're planning to put more messaging out as we get closer.
Thank you, Chris. Thank you. I would like to bring clarity to a couple of points. This project is solely within the hands of the South Carolina Department of Transportation. The law enforcement agencies of all the surrounding areas are participating because of the impact that this will cause to the area, and I am very grateful for the coordinated effort of all of the public information officers to get this information out. One of, I was in our fats, our regional transportation meeting on Friday, and this is, of course, one of the bigger items that will be occurring in the next month or so. One of the things that's going to be of critical need is that each municipality produce information as quickly as possible when there's an interruption on some of the alternate paths, you know, to make sure our citizens and those traveling through our community are aware that there's a problem. I mean, we have a problem on a regular day, not just when the bridge is being worked on. So everybody will be working very hard in all locations to make sure as much information as we can get, we will provide. Also, more specifically, to Fort Mill, the work on the Southern Bypass intersection at Sprat Street was scheduled to begin, of course, during this time. They have moved the start date for that construction to be after the work on the bridge is complete and traffic patterns have returned to normal. So as long as we've waited for that intersection to be addressed, this project is going to take precedence. There's no way we could interrupt both traffic patterns at this point in time. So the intersection of the Fort Mill Bypass and Sprat Street improvement will occur after the work on the Catawba River Bridge on I-77.
Are they going to do the northbound side?
I was not, you know, that wasn't asked. I did wonder about that. The question from Mr. Hels was, will they do the same type of work on the other side of that bridge? My belief is yes, but probably at a later date.
We've, we've asked that similar question. When would that happen? And you are correct. Their plan is to do this exact procedure in a few years. They didn't specify, but it would just replicate what they're doing on the northbound side.
And I, I know the inconvenience that this will, will cause. I know that it's going to be further frustration, but to be honest with you, the work must be I know that it's going to be further frustration, but to be honest with you, the work must be done. Anyone that drives across that bridge, you can't miss the problems on the pavement. It must be done and it must be done, I think, in the timeframe that they've chosen. So again, not, not the problem that we created, but the problem that we will help with. And I ask that everyone use patience and pre-planning. You know, try to figure out your timing and if you don't have to get out, you know, around that project, don't. Please don't. Plan, I believe I read by the Department of Transportation suggestion on Friday, they said plan at least 15 to 30 minutes additional time to get to your destination. And I believe we were told last week that traffic counts had moved back after the pandemic began to 2019 level. So we have a lot more people on the roads than we have for the last year. And I don't know about you, but I've noticed everybody driving has a little bit shorter fuse and a little bit shorter tempers and a lot less patience with new ramps. So we're going to have people in this community that are unfamiliar with our road systems and they're going to be frustrated trying to get to work or doctor's appointment or the like. So please, everyone, you know, use caution, use good practices driving and have some patience with everyone.
The highway tolls already started, at least in that area, because they had six cars stopped Saturday in that area.
Well, not a bad thing. So thank you, Chris Sardelli, for the fine work on getting this information pulled together and keeping our community up to date. I really appreciate the more aggressive communications approach that is being taken and we appreciate the work that you're doing.
Is Chris going to be in, is Chris going to be in contact with the sheriff's department and be able to feed through any information that they have throughout the process of anything changes? Or if there's an issue or whatnot, that way we can get it to our constituents as quick as possible?
Yes.
Yes.
A great question. We, I'm actually meeting tomorrow with our group of representatives from the various agencies and municipalities. And the plan is as we get into that project, sheriff's office will take the lead in getting the information and we'll relay it. Get it.
Very good, thank you, sir.
Great, thank you.
And I, I will say that the county sheriff's department has been great at putting information out on all social media, including the Nextdoor app. There's been some discussion on it, people know it's coming, but you never know what it's going to be like till it happens. So, yeah, it, it only takes one accident in the midst of this to shut everything down. So please be cautious in your driving, plan ahead.
Is there any way that we could get that first slide with the picture of the bridge and the closing and then these two links put together? So that on our Facebook page, that we can share those out to, to different people?
Yes, we actually, I have all that information on the front page of our website and I have linked to it a few times on our social media. And the plan is I'll, I'll do that each week. So yes.
Okay, very good.
And the rest of us can share it on our social media so that, you know, we're, we're doing everything we can as individuals and council members to share that information with our community.
Mayor, this is Lisa, join the call, sorry for being late. But question, two questions. The first is, and I apologize if it was asked and I missed a part of getting on. I have not seen anything from the school district really pushing or promoting kids to ride buses as much as possible to limit the amount of traffic. Have we heard anything that's being addressed like that?
Chris, with this, I believe the school district public information officers have been a party to this information, is that not correct?
That is correct, yes. The school district's been part of it, as has a few other school district impacted, so I know Rock Hill as well. And they are working on their own messaging, I believe. We, we recognize the concern that buses actually may be impacted. Just because this, this could impact, this will filter off, not just on 77, but on the US 21 and then on the So they are aware and they are planning their own communication for that.
Yeah, we just have so many buses that come from the other side of 77 to our side, that they definitely are going to have an impact. And not just buses, the parents who drive their kids or pick them up. So the less cars we can have, the better. And then, are we working with a communication plan for HOAs? I know you've got your own social media that you're working on, but what other ways are we working to communicate with people that may not be on our Facebook page or social media pages?
We are going, that's a great question. We are going to make sure to do as many HOAs as possible. One specific one that we know will be impacted in Mason's Bend neighborhood, mostly because there's a school as well and a river access point. So we, we are going to be giving that information to. So part of our plan is to get this information to those HOAs, we're going to do it now. We had been putting it out on our respective websites and social media, but we knew, we didn't want the message to get lost. So we wanted to get that message out soon. So we are going to be pushing it to HOAs.
And Lisa, our responsibility is to make the information available. We will make that information available through every avenue that we can, just as the sheriff's department is and other municipalities. This was discussed on Friday. And, you know, it, it's something that will be repeated over and over again on every avenue possible.
In addition, just so you know, we have been reaching out to local businesses and retail areas as well. So one of those, including Kingsley, since they'll be impacted as well. And they've been able to inform residents that live in their, in their housing and the merchants. So we've been trying to just come up with a list of everyone that could be impacted and, and we're getting it out in as many places as possible.
Great, thank you. And I will say, my dad lives in Charlotte and the other day was talking about how he's restructuring his travel for work because of it. So it, the word is definitely getting out.
All right, great work, Chris, and thank you for staying on this. This will be a month-long effort for all of our staff as we not only are doing communications, but our police and fire departments will be working to ensure that everything is addressed in a, in a rapid way and that we are not hindered any more than absolutely necessary with any response that we need to make. All right, any question, further questions on this particular topic? All right. We have no executive session items, so Mr. Huntley, do you have anything for the good of the whole?
I'm fine, bye.
Tony?
Good.
Mr. Moody?
I'm good, thank you.
Mr. Shirey?
I just want to say it was a great turnout for the start of the strawberry festival. And there's a lot more things that are going to be happening, so keep your, keep your eyes and your ears open and participate in all this great activity we have in our town.
Great, wonderful. Ms. Cook?
All good, thank you.
The seam saw? All right, I would like to also add my thanks for those that have been working diligently for months, if not the last year, to prepare for the strawberry festival that kicked off with a, several activities. I saw beautiful pictures of chosen queens in the strawberry pageantry was wonderful. The, unfortunately, it did rain a little bit on the sprint and stroll hosted by the Fort Mill Economic Development Partners. But I think the turnout was good and I hope this becomes a signature event in the years to come. Waffle breakfast, we are in full swing and the weather looks pretty good for this particular week. Found it interesting how many people like myself heard all of the fireworks from the Come See Me conclusion in Rock Hill. It's kind of interesting how that carried across the river the way that it did. And on a really interesting point, I was so proud to vote with and support the motion in ARFAT last Friday to put aside $10 million over the course of the next five years to be spent in the next two years in our region for pedestrian and bicycle pathways. So this money is much needed for everything from sidewalks to finding safer paths for those that aren't using a car to move from place to place. This is an enormous vote and Mayor Gaddis and Mayor O'Neal and myself were very pleased to be supporting of this option and this money to be set aside. It was a good day for our region and our communities. So thanks to them for the support and the effort to move forward. With that, I'll entertain a motion for adjournment.
I move to adjourn.
You have a motion and a second to adjourn. All those in favor, please say aye. All those, all those opposed, nay. I hope you have a wonderful week and thank you for attending.